Yes.
Okay. Now, I'll call to order the Monday, December 16th, 2019, meeting of the Oregon City Planning Commission. First item on the agenda is public comment on items not on our agenda this evening. We have two public hearings on the agenda. Is anyone wishing to comment on any other items other than those two? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move right into item 3A. Planning File GLUA-19-Dash-00017. General Land Use Application Site Plan Design Review Parking Adjustment for the Milner Veterinary Clinic. Mr. Baasilieva? Baasilieva? I'm sorry. I murder it every time. I apologize.
That's okay. Thank you.
Oh, and our public hearing is a continuation?
It is.
The public record is still open?
It is. You can either do the disclosures now for both hearings, or you can hold off and do the disclosures for the second hearing. But for this hearing, if you are not going to do the disclosures for both of them, in this hearing, I want you to ask whether or not anybody's had any ex parte contacts since the last hearing, which was November...
Or site visit.
Or a site visit.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah, let's do them separately. So, any ex parte contacts or site visit? Commissioner Gou.
No ex parte contacts, and I did drive by the area several times around the neighborhood and around the front of and down Malala.
And we're talking about the veterinary clinic?
Yes.
Okay.
I drove all around the area several times.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Johnson?
No, no site visits, no ex parte contact.
Okay. Commissioner Schlagenhoffer?
No, and no.
Oh, no. Commissioner?
No ex parte, but I did drive the area.
Okay. And the same for me. No ex parte contacts, and I did visit the site a couple of times. Does anyone in the audience wish to question any of the commissioners on the statements they've made? Okay. Now, we're ready.
Thank you. So, this is the Site Plan and Design Review and Planning Commission Parking Adjustment for the Milner Veterinary Clinic. I'm going to breeze through this since it was already before you, but let me know if you have any questions. Oh, there's another quicker somewhere, but if you could use... Thank you. Okay. So, the Milner Veterinary Clinic is located on the corner of Malala Avenue and Warner Street. It is developed with the veterinary clinic as well as a self-serve dog wash and a 21-stall parking lot. The applicant is proposing a new parking lot located across the street, which will include 18 stalls and associated landscaping. In total, that would result in 39 parking stalls for the veterinary clinic, and it is before you tonight because that is more than the maximum allowed by our code, so a Planning Commission Parking Adjustment is required. Maximum parking requirements in our code are based on the uses and square footage of each use, so for the clinic, for the clinic use as well as the self-serve dog wash, a maximum of 15 parking stalls would be allowed. If you recall, the last time that this was before you, staff had findings that the first two Planning Commission Parking Adjustment Criteria were not met, so I'll focus on those two and just talk about what has changed since our last meeting. The first one requires that the applicant submit documentation that the project or use requires more parking than the maximum allowed by our code. The applicant did submit a parking study of Milner Veterinary Clinic's staff and clients, which showed that, on average, there were 23 staff and clients in need of parking, and the lowest number of staff and clients in need of parking documented during the parking study was 16, and the highest number was 32. The applicant is requesting 39 parking stalls, which is more than the maximum documented during the parking study. So initially, we had findings that the 39 parking stalls are not justified. At the November 18th Planning Commission Hearing, the applicant provided testimony regarding the growth of the business and clinic staff, and identifying that the clinic is fully booked each day, and that they anticipate hiring an additional veterinarian and two veterinary technicians to support the growth of the clinic, which in turn will generate more clients. And the applicant also identified that the study that was submitted was not conducted during the clinic's busiest time, which is when the weather warms up and pets are out and about more and more prone to injury or exposure to fleas and ticks. So, given the applicant's testimony at the last hearing, the Planning Commission found that the 39 parking stalls that are proposed are justified, so criteria number one has been met. The second criteria that we had found had not been met at the last hearing was number two, which requires that the applicant submit an on-street parking availability analysis, which shows that there is a consistent shortage of on-street parking and demonstrates that their additional parking need can't be met with those available on-street parking spaces, and therefore, more off-street parking is required, and our code allows you to consider on-street parking within 600 feet of the subject site. So, the applicant had not submitted that analysis, so staff conducted an analysis based on aerial imagery and Google Street View that showed that there was approximately 130 on-street parking stalls within 600 feet of the site. And at our last meeting, the Planning Commission had some discussion on what should be considered available on-street parking, given the veterinary clinic use, since clients coming to the clinic are transporting a pet in a carrier that may be heavy, or pets on a leash that may be nervous or uncooperative. And on top of that, the clinic also takes emergency walk-ins, so potentially, pets and their owners could be under distress in an emergency situation. So, given the circumstances that are unique to the Milner Veterinary Clinic, the Planning Commission identified certain street conditions that should be excluded when considering available on-street parking. And those include streets that have a substandard pavement width, on-street parking, on streets that require clients transporting pets to walk on a street with no sidewalk, or to walk on or cross Malala Avenue, and streets with inadequate or no street lighting. So, when applying these parameters that the Planning Commission identified, the only available on-street parking within 600 feet of the site would be the 10 on-street parking stalls on the clinic property's frontage. And the applicant did submit an analysis of the on-street parking availability of those 10 stalls that are on the property's frontage. The analysis showed that, on average, six of those stalls were occupied, but the parking study also showed that there are cars that are parking in unpermitted locations, like on, like double parking in the existing clinic parking lot, or parking on the vacant lot where the new parking lot is proposed. On average, there were six cars parked in those locations that were documented during the study, so if those vehicles also were utilizing the on-street parking, then those 10 spaces would be at capacity, warranting the need for additional off-street parking. So, based on the Planning Commission's interpretation of available parking within 600 feet of the site, criterion two also has been met. And then, the staff report includes findings for criteria three through six, showing that the additional parking does not impact the function and use of the site, that the parking lot is compatible with the neighborhood, and it does not impact safety or availability of public services. So, with that, we are recommending approval of the application with the conditions in the staff report. I do have one correction to the staff report, which is on page 70. The final section for the conclusion and recommendation still included the language for denial of the application, and it should be the language for approval with conditions, which is on the screen there. And I can answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Nope.
I have one. One of the conditions was number 23. Could you bring up the parking lot layout? It talked about revised layout so that the drive aisle, adjacent to the driveway, does not exceed 24 feet in width. Can you? I want to make sure I understand exactly where that is on the map.
Yeah, so, we have a maximum drive aisle width, which is 24 feet, and we also have a requirement that says that all areas in the parking lot that are not used for parking or maneuvering or circulation have to be landscaped. So, the staff report has findings that justify the wider aisle, kind of going this way horizontally on the screen, because of those two back spaces to make it easier for cars parked in those spaces to back out, but the aisle going down...
Can you use the pointer? Come on.
The aisle going this way, it doesn't require the additional width, so that condition is requiring a revised layout where this aisle here is 24 feet in width.
Not more than 20.
Right.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for staff?
It's a shame I wasn't using the OC pointer.
Okay. There's no other questions for staff. At this point, we'll hear from the applicant. Dr. Milner?
I don't have anything.
You don't have anything?
No.
Okay. Any representative of neighborhood associations? Any members of the public wishing to speak? Okay. No need for rebuttal, then. At this point, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any discussion? I think we discussed it pretty good last time.
I think we did.
We kind of beat this one to death.
It's a shame. It's a shame we had to go through so much commotion to get to a point where we all agreed we needed to get through. What a shame we had to go through all that.
Okay. Point well taken. All right, then. Call for the vote.
All right. Commissioner Schlagenhoffer?
Do we have to move it?
Oh, your motion? Sorry. Sorry, 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 sorry.
I'm going to accept whatever it is on. The planning file GLUA-19-Dash-00017.
Just to clarify, with conditions?
Is that what it says?
The recommendation is for with conditions?
With conditions, I guess. Okay. Do I need to read the second number two, Park 19-Dash?
No.
Okay. It's done.
Okay. Second. All right. Moving to second. Now, we'll go to the vote.
Commissioner Schlagenhoffer?
Aye.
Commissioner Gage?
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Guyle?
Aye.
And Chair Mitchell?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. I want to say two things about parking before we move on, because the most common thing that we were asked, when I went back through what we did over last year, getting ready for my commission, report to the city commission in a couple of nights, the most common thing we were asked about were parking adjustments. And I found a couple of things interesting in our code that I think we need to keep in mind. The first one, talking about on-street parking, 17.52, off-street parking and loading, 17.52.15CB says onsite parking requirements may be reduced based on parking vacancy identified in the parking study. It doesn't say they have to be reduced. And I'm sure the intention there was, if somebody wants to go under the minimum, they can include that. But because this says "may," there really wasn't any requirement for the applicant, in this case, to include those onsite parking spaces. We're into the "may" and "must" thing again.
Are you talking about related to this applicant?
No. No, that's why I didn't mention it until after we were done. I'm talking about in the future. I think we need to keep, we need to make sure that we understand that the applicant may include on-street parking if they desire to, but they don't have to, the way our code's written.
That's correct. They don't have to, but if they would like to include on-street parking to go towards their off-street totals, then the criteria is non-discretionary, so they get it if they want it, but they don't have to.
But they don't have to.
So, most people don't unless they need it, and then they'll apply it.
Okay. Just wanted to bring that up. And the other thing, when we were talking about the unimproved streets and people parking all over the place in the narrow street and whatnot, later on in the code, I'm not finding the exact, it says, it defines what an on-street parking space is, and it says, "A parallel parking on-street space is each 22 feet of uninterrupted and available curb." It doesn't say street frontage, doesn't say, you know, open space, it's curb. So, like you said, you know, your map tonight is more accurate, because on the other one, we were including a lot of spaces that didn't have curb, and those really aren't onsite parking spaces.
Yeah, I think that standard is referring to the length of the stall, but parking in a location on the street where there is no curb is still legal parking, so we have included that.
Well, according to the definition of our code, that wouldn't be a parking space.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyway. Just wanted to bring it up.
Let's not talk about this particular applicant.
No, I'm not. I didn't. That's why I brought it up after we had voted. Not talking about this one. I'm talking about in the future.
Thank you, Mike. Good observation.
Okay. Enough about parking until later on. I'm sure we're going to talk about parking some more.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay. We are on to the next item, which is 3B GLUA-19-Dash-00025. General Land Use Application Conditional Use Master Plan Detail Development Plan for New Gardner Middle School Building and Facilities at 180 Ethel Street. And I apologize, I have to read this script, and I don't have my glasses. Okay. We have a public hearing on land use applications scheduled tonight. Our role is to conduct the public hearing and to make decisions about the matter before us. In making those decisions, we must apply the applicable codes and laws, and cannot vary from or change those laws or codes. Members of the Planning Commission are to be unbiased. Before the start of the hearing, I will ask the commissioners whether they have any potential conflicts, such as family, financial, or business relationships with any of the applicants or with regard to the land in question. I will also ask whether any of the commissioners have discussed the application in question with any of the parties, or have independent knowledge of relevant facts, such as a visit to the site in question. Any member of the audience may question any commissioner about their disclosures. A staff report has been prepared for each application and has been made available to the public seven days before the first public hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report. The quasi-judicial hearing procedure that the commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. Hearing procedure steps are shown in the chart over there on the wall. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a speaker's card and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. Speakers will proceed in the order in which their card is received. You should fill out your address on the card so the city can notify you of its final decision. For the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name and city of residence. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria, and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. Any person may submit written material while the public record is open on each application. Any written materials received by the city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the city staff in order to become part of the record. If a person intends for PowerPoint presentations, oversized poster boards, reports, pictures, or other exhibits used in their oral testimony to be placed in the record, copies must be submitted to the city staff while the record is open. If they're not given to staff, they will not be included in the record. Any person wishing in continuance to present additional evidence and testimony, or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence, must make that request before the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. If the Planning Commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue that you may wish to appeal must have been raised on the record for the consideration of the city commission, or Luba, or both. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient detail, and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond to, the issue will not be deemed appealable to the city commission or the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. So, now, we will open the public record for File GLUA-19-Dash-00025. And starting with Commissioner Guyle, any ex parte conflict, contact, conflict of interest, or site visit?
No, no, no.
No, no, and no. Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
No.
No, okay.
So, no ex parte contact, no conflict of interest, and I visited the site.
Ms. Gage?
No, no, and I've driven by many times.
Okay. No conflict of interest for me, no ex parte contacts, and I did make two site visits. Does anyone in the audience wish to question any of the commissioners on what they've stated? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go on with the staff report. Ms. Reed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, we're in the middle of the presentation. All right, there we go. Okay, thank you, Chair Mitchell. My name's Kelly Reed, planner with Oregon City. This application is a conditional use application, master plan, and detailed development plan for replacement of Gardner Middle School.
Is your microphone on?
I'll talk louder.
Okay.
Closer. Okay, so, Gardner Middle School is a school within the Oregon City School District system that serves grades 6 through 8. It's in the Rivercrest neighborhood association area, and the site is approximately 19 acres. And I'm going to do my best to keep this presentation short, this is a pretty complex application. The staff report was about 100 pages long, so I'm going to give you a high-level summary as best I can, and then if you have any questions, want me to get into more detail about anything, then we can certainly do that. So, the subject site is in the R6 single-family zone, and it's surrounded by other residential zones, R6, R2, which is our high-density residential zone, and some mixed-use zoning down here along Warner Milne, which is the PGE, the PGE site. So, the, here's the site plan. The applicant has proposed a master plan, because this is an institutional property over 10 acres. It's a master plan with a five-year duration, so Phase 1 of the master plan is building the new school building on the south side of the site, whereas the current building is on the north side of the site, so kind of flipping things around here. Phase 1 would include the parking lot, school building, the bus loop, and then Phase 2 would include the demolition of the existing school building and the athletic facilities that you see on the north side of the site. So, basically, everything on-site will be replaced. The capacity of the school is growing from 823 students currently to 1,000 students. Number of parking spaces is staying pretty steady, from 79 to 76. The overall building size is growing by 40,000 square feet, and then I've included the vehicle trips increase that are associated with the expansion. Now, the applicant does note that the expansion to 1,000 students isn't going to happen immediately once this building is constructed. It's going to occur over time, so we won't see necessarily all these new trips right away, but eventually, when the school reaches capacity, then we would see those trips. In the afternoon, trips are associated with 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., when school gets out. Evening trips are more like normal rush hour, so 5:00 to 6:00 o'clock time period. So, there's a zoom-in of Phase 1. You can see the access to the site is being moved from Hood Street to Williams Street. So, traffic will come in off of Williams down here in the corner. Will, so if parents are dropping their students off, or, you know, for teachers driving to work, they're going to come in here. The drop-off loop comes around the front of the school entrance, and then goes through the parking lot, and then this area here will be gated with a staff parking lot, fire truck turnaround, and a smaller bus drop-off area that will be used for just specialized The Williams Street shown here, extension, I'm going to show you a slide later, it's actually been revised a little bit, so it's, it'll look a little bit different. It goes a little bit farther into the site now, but we can talk about that later. So, Phase 2, so the bus loop here comes off of Hood Street. That is actually part of Phase 1. And then Phase 2 is everything north of that bus loop. We've got a small parking lot from Ethel Street to serve the athletic area of the site, and then you can see kind of some walkways along the edge, and then some stormwater facilities and other outdoor learning environments. So, here are the building elevations. This is the south-facing building elevation, and then this is west, sorry, east. So, this is going to be the main front entry of the, sorry, no, that's the back. The front is right here, so big covered canopy, entryway with kind of full glass windows. This is a gymnasium area with no windows, and this is the north elevation. And then, this is actually the back, so in this courtyard area is big outdoor space that you'll see on the site plan. And then this is the south-facing facade, so William, we'll talk about Williams Street more, but if that gets extended further, then that facade will part, like this front end of that facade might be, you know, kind of facing a street along Williams, but right now, Williams Street is only being extended about as far as the parking lot goes, and so that part of the building is only going to face the parking lot on the south side. So, this is kind of an untraditional site, because we don't have any street frontage. We have three dead-end streets, and then one small street extension on the south side. So, that may, you might have noticed in the staff report that that kind of made some of the criteria a little bit tricky to meet as far as the entryway and the street-facing The applicant's also proposing several different types of fencing, and what's not shown on here are a few CMU block walls down here along the south side, so there are some adjustments and some additional findings in the staff report related to those CMU block walls. And here are samples, examples of the different fence types that are proposed, this variety of heights and materials, and there are some conditions of approval in the staff report related to some of the fence heights, and the proposed chain link fence, which we don't, we don't allow invisible locations, but we do on, you know, the backs of properties, and so there's a condition of approval related to that. I do want to mention that the district, and they'll talk about this, but the, we worked very closely with the district. You know, this was, again, a complex project. very closely with the district, you know, this was, again, a complex project, we had multiple meetings, and so we've gone over all of these conditions in great detail with the district, and I'll let them speak for themselves, but we've, we're on the same page, and I believe there are no really disputed conditions at this point. There's a rendering of the front plaza area, front entry area, and again, this Williams Street extension down here, it's actually gonna end up being a little bit closer to here, and then the driveway is gonna be more lined up with that drive aisle. So the criteria for conditional use, now this, you know, it's an existing school site, but it is expanding, and so we do look at that conditional use criteria. Schools are a conditional use within a residential zone, so we want to look at the impacts of the school expansion on the neighborhood. And so specifically regarding the last two criteria, that the use won't alter the character of the surrounding area in a manner which limits, impairs, or precludes the use of surrounding properties, that's where we look at, you know, there are people living on Williams Street especially, there's a lot of additional traffic that's going to be coming down Williams Street now, and so we kind of looked at that, and what the impact would be, and if any mitigation was needed. And then also, we look at the comprehensive plan, when we have a conditional use, so we pulled out the relevant goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. And we do have some conditions of approval that are recommended, related to the additional traffic on Williams Street. So, we would see Williams Street improved with new pavement, pedestrian facilities, curb, gutter, street trees. And then, the comprehensive plan includes the transportation system plan, so we look at that in great detail, and see if the proposal is consistent with the TSP, or the transportation system plan. So here's a map of all of the sidewalks currently in the area, and you can see, in orange is where we have sidewalk. And then, you can see it's missing from many of the streets in the surrounding area. So the school district worked, has, you know, been in discussions with us about, you know, how to address that. So we have some conditions of approval related to sidewalk infill on Williams, on Leonard, Hood, and Ethel, and the city has agreed to put some of its funding towards some of those projects. And the school district would fund some of those projects, and so that we'd have pretty good sidewalk coverage in the end. And I do, I wanted to mention the Safe Routes to School Plan as well. Last year, I believe, or the year before, before this plan to replace the school was finalized, the school crafted a Safe Routes to School Plan, and the findings of that plan included that fifty-nine percent of students take the bus home, twelve percent of students walk home, so there's slightly different percentages in the morning versus the afternoon, but twelve percent walk, and then three percent bike to and from school, and the remainder drive get dropped off with their families or friends. And distance, traffic, safety concerns, and lack of sidewalks or paths were then identified as the main barriers to walking, and that was a survey of parents. So, you know, we, we really, we do have evidence that addition of sidewalks and safety measures in the area would help those families that do want to have their kids walk to school. There's some of the existing street conditions, you can see Williams Street, where all the new vehicular traffic, and all of the kids walking and biking to school would be sent on Williams under this new plan, and you can see it doesn't have sidewalks on either side, the pavement's in pretty poor condition. And so, the condition of approval that has been written would be to add a ten-foot-wide pathway on the south side here, and that would be shared. So we don't want the, normally on a local street, you would expect bicyclists to kind of ride on the street. For middle schoolers, we thought it was more appropriate to have them off the street. So that sidewalk will be ten feet wide, to be shared with kids walking, and then a five-foot planter strip with street trees, and then pavement improvements on Williams. And then the north side would kind of be kept as it is. There are existing single-family houses with driveways and trees, and kind of their front yards just kind of blend into the street. And, and if we're putting all the students on the south side, then we felt that it was unnecessary to fully improve the north side of Williams Street. So there were TSP projects as well that helped inform a lot of these decisions. One is a shared-use path going through the middle of the site, we'll talk a little bit more about that, but the district proposed that to actually go up to Ethel, and then go around the perimeter of the site on the north end, instead of cutting through the middle of that. So that, so that is the current plan that we've, the city recommends approving. There's Leonard Street sidewalks, Hood and Ethel Street sidewalks, which are identified in the transportation system plan, and then a crossing with a rapid-flashing beacon, which is the device that's outside of the library on Seventh Street, so it's pedestrian-activated beacon. That, when the TSP was approved, most of the student, pedestrian traffic was crossing at that location. Now that Williams will be the main entrance, we think that most of the people would be crossing at Williams, and so we've written a condition to move that project down to Lynn Avenue and Williams Street, and have the school district contribute half of the estimated cost of that rapid-flashing beacon, with the city contributing the other half. One more plan that we looked at was the Leland Myers corridor plan. This was adopted in 2014, and this also identified a lot of safety improvements, and pedestrian walking and biking improvements in the area. So this helped to inform the conditions of approval as well. And last, part of the TSP that we looked at was our multimodal connectivity plan, which identifies future street extensions, not necessarily all future street extensions, but the ones that, that we could identify at this point and wanted to call out. Now, we have block length requirements, and so all site, any site, larger site, has to meet those block length requirements, so this doesn't, again, include every potential street extension, but I'll zoom in for you. So here's the existing school site. You can see Williams Street is identified as a street extension, and then we have the pathway extension shown here, and another shared path as well. So, the district proposing to extend Williams Street is consistent with this plan. So here's the revised, updated Williams Street plan, showing the ten-foot path, the planter strip, and kind of bringing that extension out a little bit farther, so that it lines up with the drive aisle and the parking lot. And this, this south side improvement would be taken all the way to Lynn Avenue, along the south side of Williams. Now, we talked about that shared-use path, cutting through the middle of the site that the TSP called for, that's shown in red here. So it's wrapping, wrapping around the site from Ethel Street, along the north edge, and then connecting to the little pathway that goes to Laurel Lane, the little pathway here that goes to cul-de-sac, I believe it's Haley Court, and then this one goes to Ryland's Lane. So we've got a lot of little connections that students use to walk to the site from the end of the cul-de-sac, and so this pathway would connect all of those. For security purposes, the district, and the, actually, we talked to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee about this, because it'll be part of our shared-use path trail system. And I think everyone tended to kind of coalesce around the idea that, for security purposes, this pathway would be closed, should be closed, during school hours. So it would be a public pathway, but not while school is in operation. And there would, there would be gates, or the school's proposing to put gates at these locations, so they would be unlocked, so that students could use them to get to school, but then, once school starts, those gates would be locked. So there would be one here, here, and here, and then here at Ethel as well, so that people couldn't come in through Ethel during the daytime, on school days. And so this would be eight feet wide, with lighting, and all of that was discussed at the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee earlier this month. And that, the minutes from that, or the video from that meeting is in the record, the PrAC did not make a formal recommendation to you, but we, they wanted to kind of refer you to the meeting that they held, and kind of rely on staff to share the conclusion that they came to. Alright. I don't mean for you to read all of this, but there are eleven adjustments to standards that have been requested by the applicant. When you do, when an applicant has a master plan, these are meant for larger uses, and mostly institutional uses, and sometimes it makes sense to adjust some of our development and design standards to fit that particular site or campus. And so, there are eleven adjustments that have been requested, and we've got detailed findings in the staff report about each of those. I'm happy to answer questions about them. The criteria for approving adjustments are that whatever is proposed as an alternative from the applicant, equally or better meets the purpose of the regulation, that any impacts from, that results from the adjustment are mitigated, and that it remains consistent with our comprehensive plan. So we do have some conditions of approval, ensuring that the adequate mitigation is provided for some of these adjustments. I'm not gonna get into any of them in detail unless there's a question from you. And then, lastly, I want to clarify, Williams Street extension, there's a condition of approval of number thirty-three for, that describes the requirements for building Williams Street, and I apologize for the kind of appearance of this slide, but it was a last-minute little sketch that we did, just to clarify that there is a shadow plat for a future street, and so, we don't have that slide. So this, down south here is the Red Soils Campus, Clackamas County. Their master plan includes a loop road, that would be this orange line coming up to Warner Milne. So at some point in the future, they're gonna be building that loop road, and it will intersect with Warner Milne, potentially with a signal. This vacant land right here, which currently belongs to the church, but could be developed in the future, could potentially include an extension of that street up to Williams. And so we have a condition of approval to, that the school district construct Williams Street to where they have proposed to construct it, and then dedicate whatever additional right-of-way is necessary for that, for Williams Street to, in the future, meet up with this north-south street. Now, we're not totally certain that this north-south street would ever happen, because it is dependent on development of that vacant property, but if it does, then we would have that right-of-way from the school district in order to connect that. I just want to clarify that what this connection, that this gap area here, that the applicant is not required to build that, or pay a fee in lieu of that, just to dedicate the right-of-way for that portion. So, that's what that condition of approval thirty-three means. And we recommend approval with the conditions listed in the staff report. And that's the end of my presentation.
Okay. Any questions for staff at this point?
Can you go back to the screen that showed all those?
All the adjustments?
Yeah. So I was just looking at one, the height, because we've just been discussing downtown heights. What's the current building height of the, of the school at this point?
Of the existing school? I believe it's less than thirty-five feet, but I don't know exactly.
So I see thirty-eight point five, and you see forty-four. Has the neighborhood discussed anything I'm having to do with heights, or restrictions of views, or anything?
So, we didn't receive any public comments about...
About that?
We noticed the application.
A lot to read, if you even said to us.
Right. So, so most of the building is thirty-five feet, or, you know, less than thirty-five feet tall. The, just the gymnasium portion, and then some of the mechanical equipment on the roof brings that height up in some places. So, most of the building will still meet the height requirement, and our findings for this adjustment were that no mitigation is needed, because the building is set so far back from the property lines, two, greater than two-hundred feet on one side, and then at least ninety feet, once that Williams Street is built, it'll be at least ninety feet, I think, from the, from the property line. So, that distance, it makes it such that there won't be any impacts to views or anything on any neighboring properties.
The other thing, several slides back, but you showed where some of the trees are gonna have to be removed, up on, I'm not sure if it was Williams, or where? Several slides back, and...
So, originally, the pathway was proposed along the edge of the site here, and so that was gonna require removal of some of these trees. The district has since decided to change the alignment to be closer to the track, and so that's actually going to allow them to preserve some of the trees along the north edge. Well, I don't, I think some of them were identified by the Arborist as not really healthy, so I think there might still be some removed, but...
And then another situation, like near the library, where they said they weren't healthy, and they cut them down anyway? I'm sorry, just, I'd like to know why they were considered unhealthy, like to know how many are being removed.
Sure. Yeah, so it's in the Arborist report. We have a condition of approval that they provide a final tree mitigation plan, because we know that, you know, their proposed tree mitigation plan is going to be modified because of this, but there are, I can't remember exactly how many, but trees in the area around the existing school building, most of those are being removed, so that this track and this field can be built here. But the applicant is proposing numerous trees above and beyond the normal landscaping requirements, and so those are providing the mitigation for that.
I guess, though, it depends, as Denise would have always said, is, is what, where the size of the trees that are existing that are being cut down, and I'm almost fed up with listening to Arborist reports who say their trees are no good, just so they can remove them. I mean, I see that a lot in our city, so that, that's why I asked that question.
Right, right.
Is there somewhere in this report that says that the height or the width of those trees?
Yes, so each, the Arborist report documents the size of each tree, the health of it, and then whether it's proposed to be removed or not. And our tree mitigation requirements are higher for larger trees. So, their current tree mitigation plan provided, it was a little bit, there were some items missing from it, as far as the location of the trees, and they needed to kind of change it a bit, but they'll be required to do that as a condition of approval, to make sure that their mitigation plan provides the proper number of mitigation trees.
Even though we know when mitigation takes place, it never is the same size, it takes years for them to ever get removed.
It does.
So we don't know offhand how many trees are being removed?
Well, I could tell you what the proposal includes, but again, that's going to be, that's gonna change, because the pathway location has changed.
Provides them security and some noise buffer.
I'd recommend you can ask some of the questions the applicant as well.
Okay. I figured asking the staff, because I figured the staff would know. Sorry. I never get, I never ask the right questions at the right time, do I? I don't belong here.
You can always go, you can always go back. You can always go, you can always go back. Other questions for staff?
Uh, yeah, just one.
Okay.
Okay. I was making sure we're designing something big enough for future use. The 823, is that current enrollment or current capacity?
I think the applicant might be able to clarify it, but that is the capacity, and I think it might also be the enrollment.
Okay. Because if it was labeled as capacity, he was making sure that's the enrollment and we're not over the capacity already? So that was a reasonable question.
Yeah, some modular buildings have been added in the recent past to accommodate the additional students, so that has, you know...
Right. So, yeah, that's why I want to make sure we're not at, you know, 920 with the modular buildings. You know, I just want to know what the numbers are.
Right. Yeah, I would ask, let the applicant answer that one. Oh, and it's, 70 trees are proposed to be removed total on the 19 acres, but then these, it looks like nine trees up here would be, end up being preserved, so maybe, it might be closer to 60 that would be removed?
Wow. That's a whole forest. The neighborhood knew that all those trees were going to be? I've always heard, even from Ken Ziegler and other people, that neighborhoods like trees, because it provides cool. They've even reported that in neighborhoods in Portland. Having big trees provide shade and cool, and we're going to remove 70 or 60 to 70 of them. I'm shocked. Okay.
Just a note for the applicant, when you make your presentation, if you can talk about how many trees are going to be planted?
They'll never...
In replacement of the, as mitigation for the 70.
There are going to be little stems compared to the trees.
I understand that.
We just keep cutting down more trees and more trees in this city. Tree city, and we keep losing our trees.
Any other questions for staff?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll probably have more for you later. At this point, we'll hear from the applicant. Mr. Can you give us your name and city residence, and also tell us how you're related to the project?
Good evening. My name is Wes Rogers. I'm the bond program manager for the school district. I live at 906 Summit Street here in Oregon City and work for the school district.
I'm Dave Johnson. I'm an architect with Brick Architecture. We're the architect on the project, and I'm a resident of Portland.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, good evening Chair Mitchell, and members of the planning commission. I've already introduced myself, and it's our pleasure to be here tonight to tell you about our project of replacing Gardner Middle School. David has introduced himself. He's with associate principal and architect with Brick Architecture in Portland, and we're so pleased to have them. They're a very experienced and recognized design firm for K-12 education. And as Brick's name reflects, their emphasis is on building relationships and inspiring communities in K-12 education. The replacement of Gardner Middle School is one of two of our keystone projects for our bond measure that was recently approved last year. And the district's goal is to reimagine middle school learning in Oregon City School District by not only creating safe and secure learning environments, but also new educational experiences that inspire and challenge our middle school students. The other keystone project is the major renovation of our other middle school, Ogden Middle School, that is located in unincorporated Clackamas County. Other bond projects include safety and security upgrades at all of our district schools, acquisition of a land for a future middle school, career and technical education, or CTE planning and investment district-wide, and finally, additional capital upgrades throughout the district. And for more information, if you're curious, and for those who might be listening or viewing this video, you can go to www.ocschoolbond.org, O-R-G, and see up-to-date and current information about our projects. Some interesting information about this site, sometimes we overlook the history of it, but I think it's always good to be, remember our foundation in history. So the first Oregon City Junior High moved into an old high school building in 1936 and had a capacity of about 300. And by 1954, the building was overloaded with nearly 600 students. And in March 1954, a $1,170,000 bond was approved to build a 28-classroom school and named Thora B. Gardner Junior High School. And for those of you who might know about Oregon City history, Thora B. Gardner was an Oregon City resident, civic leader, active in many, many community service organizations. Born in Iceland, came to the United States in 1901, married Frederick W. Gardner, and moved to Oregon City here. In 1912, she was a member of the Oregon City School Board for 20 years and was board chairman at the time of her death on November 13, 1953. And that's a tremendous legacy of community service to the Oregon City Community and Oregon City School District. Tonight, we have our land use attorney, Mike Robinson, in attendance, as well as our consultant team, and to address any questions that may arise, including the tree question, so we're glad to have them here. And our team has worked diligently to design what we feel is an exemplary middle school facility that the community will be proud of and will be excited about for many years to come. We also just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight and talk about our programs and our school. And now I'm going to turn it over to David so he can present more precise information about the project.
Perfect. Thank you very much, Wes. Wanted to offer a little bit of context, and thank you very much for the very complete staff report. I'll try not to go over that same information again, but wanted to offer context in the form of the 2018 school bond. And that represented a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the district and the community to rethink and reimagine education at the middle level in your community in Oregon City. And the district has been unwavering in their commitment to making the most of that opportunity, initiating a broadly-based and extensive process to engage diverse voices, including students and community members. Those students in particular worked very hard to make their voice heard and to also make the most of that opportunity. They interviewed and engaged their peers in the process, and together, they developed a theme that you're seeing there, of really wanting their new school to promote, encourage, and support healthy lifestyles. That theme and their work have been instrumental in developing a design that we believe will support the following really important, critical outcomes. One, promote development of healthy lifelong choices and habits, support student choice in the development of positive decision-making skills, counter the dramatic drop in student engagement that often occurs during the middle years, support students' mental and emotional health, facilitate positive relationships between students and adults, and more than anything, create a place where students really want to be. So I think you'll see on the next slide, a rendered version of the plan that staff presented. And we're really pleased to represent the work of those voices of our design committee and proud to share what we really think is a student-focused design that creates healthy and safe indoor and outdoor places for students to learn, socialize, and play. Quickly, I think staff already went over, the existing school is indicated at the top in the dotted line, the phasing line here. New school is cited in order to allow continued kind of safe operation of the school during construction, keeping students safe, and also to take advantage to views to the right, sort of Brigadoon-like views of Mount Hood to the right across the existing cemetery. So as Kelly presented, rethinking site circulation. Hood Street will be dedicated to two-way bus traffic connecting to the bus loop that you're seeing here, and connecting to a new staff, I'm sorry, a new student bus entry on the north elevation, primary access is off of the extended William Street, connecting to new parent drop-off staff and visitor parking, and a new entrance plaza directly visible from that loop, as well as from the William Street extension. To the south, you're seeing an alternate additional bus drop-off location for specialty buses, secured staff parking, service entry, and fire department access. Here, you're seeing, what we see is a collection of indoor and outdoor places, spaces, and paths. Entry plaza here comprised of pedestrian-scaled elements, upper and lower canopies that you saw in the rendering, benches, treed areas, textured and patterned paving, covered bike parking, and then importantly, a secure courtyard to the right here that gives students opportunities to get outside in all but the worst of Oregon days. Spaces for covered dining, for play, and places to hang out, both kind of informal play structures and play elements, as well as covered play here in a footsail court. All of that within a secured fence area, which allows staff the kind of trust to let kids out into that area, and also to cross between areas of the building. Additionally, to the north and to the south, extensions of indoor program area for outdoor learning, trying to make the most of the site, even utilizing stormwater detention here and areas here for outdoor science opportunities. Additionally, a fitness or an exercise circuit here, the track and multi-use field here, here, and an additional kickball here, and then the pathway system that Kelly described connecting to those existing site access points and continuing down Hood and importantly, down the Williams extension. Is this you, or is this me? Go for it. Okay. Continuing that onsite network, as described earlier in staff report, can, developing those safe routes to school along William, and then filling in the gaps and connecting to existing sidewalks along Leonard, out in a partnership with the city along Hood and Ethel. That's it. Yeah, that's it. Maybe just to go back for a second? Switching between these, I apologize. Wanted to mention the tree replacement. You've got that?
Yeah, our trees, that was a previous question. We have 70 trees were proposed for removal, but since we've changed our pathway, that's dropped to 61, it looks like. We have 94 replacement trees that are required by the city's tree mitigation requirements. We're going to spread throughout the site 192 trees, and that's 98 trees that are above and beyond the mitigation requirements. And I'm also excited, if you can notice on the plan, there's a very large Oregon white oak right by Hood Street entrance, and we are preserving that historic tree. It's historic in our minds, and several community members, as well as staff members, have really asked us to try and save that tree. And we'll be able to do that and still meet our parking requirements and vehicular access, and we're really, really glad to do that. It is probably the hallmark tree of the site, if you've ever been on the Gardner site before. So those are some of the tree statistics. Yeah, okay, super. Well, I just wanted to just have a couple of closing comments, and just, I just really want to again thank city staff and our consultant team. We've had quite a few meetings and countless emails and conversations over the last few months. And even though the road has been rather long and twists and turns at times, we're really pleased to support the staff report and how we work together as a team. And we're excited that our work will truly make a difference in the lives of our middle schoolers for many years to come. And with that, we end our presentation, and we take any questions you might have.
Right back on that tree.
Yeah.
What sizes are the trees being, I mean, are they big ones? And you're going to replace them little, spindly little trees?
Well, they're not, well...
You can't replace them with a full-size tree.
You can't, obviously, replace them with the same maturity of a tree, because it'd be physically almost impossible. But yeah, these are smaller caliper trees that will grow over time and are going to be irrigated, and we're required by a covenant to make sure that they stay alive until they get very established. And as we've shown, we've spread them throughout and along the property lines, so we can actually provide places for, as you get into the parking lot there a little bit, and when you're out, especially on the play fields, which is where I think most of the public will spend its time, out on the play fields and so forth, we have trees scattered throughout there as well. Currently, most of our trees onsite are not in, if you've ever been to Gardner, they're not by the track, they're not by the school, except for just in the front of the school there, there are quite a few that are in the, by the Ethel Street exit out of our current parking lot. So this one, I think, provides a much more breadth in spreading out of the trees. But yeah, it'll take a few years for them to get established and to grow, and you can kind of see, I think those are indications, those renderings of some of the canopies that'll be created.
If they're not by the field or in anywhere that's interrupting, why do they have to come out?
Well, they are going to have to come out because we have to reconstruct that whole base to put a track and a field in, and also to put that parking lot in at Ethel Street, which provides emergency vehicle access in case, this is going to be used extensively by the community, and we have to have emergency vehicle access to the site, as well as an ADA, a couple of ADA parking spots. So that's why we're pretty much going to lose, we are trying to save the, as many trees as we can on the perimeter and change the path for that, and there's a couple of large fir trees by Ethel Street and the track, and save that as well. And this is Andrew with Toll, with 3J Consulting. He's got some other tree statistics here that he can share with you.
Thank you, Wes. If you don't mind, I'll insert myself into the conversation. For the record, my name is Andrew Toll with 3J Consulting. Our address is 9600 Southwest Nimbus, Suite 100 in Beaverton. I've been the land use planner on this project. I have a master's degree in landscape architecture. I also worked for an Arborist for seven years before coming to my current firm. And I'm happy to talk just a little bit about trees and why some of them definitely need to come out with this application. I'll just start with sort of a big-picture overview. I don't know if you've got handy or at your fingertips LU 4.01, our landscape plan that shows tree removal. I can certainly hand this up to you and let you take a look at it. This has changed a little bit since our initial submission, because we have changed the treatment of the pathway along the perimeter, so some of the trees that were now, or were originally shown for removal are now going to be retained. But I'll just hand this plan to you. You can circulate it amongst yourself.
Yeah.
And what is... I'll get back to the mic.
I understand. The X is what's being removed?
What this, the X's are what's being removed, and I would say, in looking at the caliper inches for these trees that are being removed, the majority of them are between 8 and 15 caliper inches, so they're not huge trees, they're not native trees. They were landscape trees that were originally planted alongside the school, and you can sort of see the shape of the school. It's not shown on that plan I've just given to you, but you can see that these are mainly located adjacent to the school. So as the school comes out and we need to make flattened ground for the track, just from a sort of big-picture perspective, when you have a site like this that's in a city, often what you do is you put the track on one side and you put the school on the other side, and then when it's time to replace the school, you flip the locations again, and it allows you to keep a school in the city center, and each time, every 50 or 60 years the school needs to be replaced, you flip-flop the location of the track and the school. Unfortunately, as the school comes down, those trees adjacent to the school will also need to come down. So they were landscape trees, it's not like native old growth or a forest situation. It's simply non-native landscape trees that were planted probably 50 years ago. They're only 8 to 20 caliper inches in size, they haven't been maintained to really create sort of an arboretum-type experience. And they will be replaced, as Wes mentioned earlier, at a rate of 98 trees more than our actual mitigation requirement is going to be. The real coup de grace for this site, the real important tree is that Oregon white oak, which is a native tree, which is located immediately south of Hood Street. And I will say that in working in development sites, those are extremely difficult to maintain when you've got new parking areas and new buildings going on around them. An extremely large amount of area has been dedicated specifically to the preservation of that tree, and grading along that area has been minimized, as has stormwater management, so that we don't flood the roots, so that we don't dry the roots out. It's really been taken into consideration to try and work around that tree because it is an incredible species, and it's an Oregon native. it is an incredible species, and it's an Oregon native, and it's something that we really want to see preserved as part of this project.
I appreciate the information on the trees. As many of you know, Bob Mahoney, when he was leaving that night, said he appreciated my focusing on trees. Guess, I never was that way, I got it from Denise. I appreciate you telling us that information, that's important to know.
My pleasure. If there's any questions, I'm available.
Oh, yeah, one. Since you're not, since you're moving the walking trail away from that north edge, is that whole road going to leave? Are those still going to be cut down? I noticed there's still Xed on your drawing.
That was one of the plans that went in with the original plans.
Okay, so that one's been changed?
It's now been changed, yeah.
Okay, so those stay on top. Was that a yes?
Yes.
Sorry, I was looking at the neighborhood.
Unless they've been recommended for removal by the arborist because of condition issues, they will retain, be retained.
Okay.
Got an overview question on perimeter security?
Yes.
And gated access roadways, walk paths and all that. Is there a two-minute answer to that or?
Well, essentially what you're trying to do in today's safety and security concepts for schools is you're trying to keep, create zones of security and safety. So you start with a perimeter fence, you move onto the site, and you're doing techniques to try and direct people to get students into the building quickly and efficiently through pathways and so forth, and you can see that happening here. You want to secure your site pretty quickly after school starts, and then you want to direct everybody else after that, you want to direct them into your front entrance and entrance of the school, which is monitored, there's video surveillance, there's other features that are done at the plaza that help staff monitor that through transparent walls and so forth, so that you can see out pretty easily and see if and identify a threat or any type of a situation that might require a security presence. So you're really trying to work in zones. Once you get into the interior zone and you get into the parking lot and maybe the front door, then you have systems in place that prevent people from just walking in, and you'll have a secure buzz-in system in the new school and other types of things that I won't share publicly, and that helps secure the school. And once you get in the school, we actually have the school partitioned into zones that immediately can be isolated, so that if we were to get an active threat inside the school, we can isolate that threat pretty quickly. Idea is slow down things from happening so that if our school resource officers, which the city helps us fund, and which we deeply appreciate the city's commitment to those two officers, so that we can get them onsite as quickly as possible to help us deal with any threats that might be at the school. Generally, that's about it, what we do.
A lot of it, video surveillance with a central.
Yes, there's a very robust video system that is cloud-based, so you don't have as much equipment as you used to have, but we'll have lots and lots of cameras at this facility and people at different places monitoring those cameras and so forth.
My number one question I had written down when Kelly first started, she placed a lot of emphasis on road improvement, sidewalks.
Yeah.
Is that covered by the bond? Normally, the development SDCs would cover it, but I'm wondering who's going to pay for it?
Yeah, the only two things that we are not paying for, but we will indirectly support and include in our construction plans are the sidewalks on Hood Street and Ethel Street that go from Leonard over to Lynn. Everything else is funded through the bond funds.
Sounds like they have a lot with the city, and who's going to pick up that cost, is I'm wondering, is that more tax increases for that or?
I'm not sure, I don't know where public works is getting that money.
I heard about all these improvements, normally, as I said, development pays for some of that through SDCs, but obviously since it's a school, I'm wondering who's going to pick up all those extra expenses.
And you're paying for, the school district's paying for the Williams Street improvement?
Yes, all the Williams Street improvements.
Oh, no, all the way, all the way out to Lynn.
Look at all the other things that she was talking about.
Yeah, we're going all the way, we're doing half of the cost of the flashing beacon, and then we're covering 100% of the cost all the way down Williams Street to the end of the extension. We're doing the sidewalks on Leonard Street that run north-south. We're doing the little stub of sidewalk there on Ethel Street that connects the Rylance Court. Then we're doing, all the interior pathways are being upgraded to eight feet, so that they're plenty wide enough for community and public use as well as students getting to school. And then we, you can see the other pathway improvements there as well.
Just for clarification for those who are watching, they know they passed a bond for this, but did they, did they have a good reason why you're having to replace Gardner Middle School?
Yeah, there's a, yeah, that's a really good question, Tom. Long before we, we went to the voters with our bond request, we had done multi, two and a half years of assessment work and studying our schools, and then coming up with a ranking system about which schools we felt like were the most vulnerable to their condition and puts them in a, in a higher risk status. At the same time, thinking about connecting our educational practice and instruction, as you know, we built a high school in 2003. That was transformative for the community and for our high school program. And we, rather than do isolated projects, we really decided to focus on middle school because now we can make a difference in that level of the district, which is really important. And this happens to be probably our school that has the most facility issues, as well as site issues, as you can tell, compared to the, the old school. And so those things, yeah, we'll have a much, a much safer school seismic-wise, we'll have a much more expanded square footage for today's learning environments, we'll be able to provide experiences here that we would never be able to provide in our old school, just because of sheer size and so forth. As well as just being able to get kids out of the building, I know physical education is a big emphasis for us, and by having these play fields, we actually have a lot more access to, for kids to go out and use that as a learning place during the, during the school day. So we call them outdoor learning situations as well. But yeah, so we concentrated on middle schools, that's why in my opening comments, I talked about middle school, reimagining middle school, and David touched on that in a few of his slides as well. And you saw pictures of middle school students being involved, heavily involved in our design process as we went through.
Does the bond fund cover the whole project or will we see, this isn't see another bond fund to help?
No, this, this bond will fund this entire project, and it funds all of the renovations at Ogden as well, as well as some other improvements throughout the district. It won't build, it won't replace, I mentioned the land acquisition, some of you might remember land acquisition for our new middle school, and our long-term goal is to replace Ogden Middle School. However, the old Ogden Middle School would be repurposed as an elementary school, because it's still a fine, got some good bones to that building, and we're doing some improvements that'll give it a, a long life. So, but soon, I don't know how soon, I probably won't be here, but I would probably say eight to 10 years out or so, you're going to see a consideration about building another middle school to replace Ogden.
I asked a lot of questions about this because I know in Park Place Neighborhood, Park Place School was let go, it's not a charter school, but I kept thinking, and now I'm hearing that the Holcombe Middle School or Holcombe Grade.
I think we're wading away from our.
Okay, well, I'm just wondering about the cause of this. I'd like to go back to the slide of outcomes. No, I'm talking about schools in general in this. There was an outcome, the slide you had there, outcomes.
Yeah, this is, these are some of our guidance design principles.
Building a new school.
What's that?
I'm trying to, I read these along with you.
How do you, okay.
What does this have to do with building a whole new building? This is what I'm trying.
Sure, yeah, so currently, by having a new building, we can really increase and improve the choices that students have, both in curriculum, as well as experience of educationally, as well as giving them opportunities to develop some habits that are good choice-making and so forth in the school. There'll be room for kids to, if you prefer a smaller environment, learning environment, and that's the kind of student you are, you'll have that option. If you want to have a learning environment that's traditional, there'll be some traditional type spaces in, in the school as well. So there's much more variety for students and their, and their specific needs. That's around student choice, positive decision-making skills, there'll be opportunities for kids to make choices in the school that they don't have currently, and so they get to learn how to make those decisions by virtue of the curriculum, they pick the environments they choose to be involved in and where they go on campus. A common drop-off in student, in middle school is student engagement. Kids just don't feel connected to their learning, are, by, well, I can tell you that these four students that you see on this slide are part of a class that actually, one of their major projects for the year was to help us design the school. And they're pretty engaged with this learning process and having to make all the traditional kinds of curriculum experiences, but shaped around a, a common day problem, which in our case was, how do we replace Gardner School? So that's some of the student engagement things that we're going to do. Mental and emotional health, this is going to be a much brighter, more natural light, safer environment for kids to feel more relaxed in and feel like they're getting supports and so forth, our counseling center will be much more expanded for that purpose as well. And then just facilitate positive relationships between students and adults. So students can see adults in the, in the facility and have them much more visible, as well as, you know, working together on more project-based learning activities makes the teachers more of a guide and a coach, as well as an instructor. And so those are some of the things that I would respond to.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions right now?
Couple things?
Sure.
Okay. As far as sporting event parking, I noticed that most of the parking lot is to the south now, and then the field is way to the north. And then there's only six spots up there by the field. Why is such a small parking lot up there, and what's that even for?
Yeah, so this, our, our hope, one, is, well, as I shared before, it's shaped like that because we have to have the ability for an emergency vehicle, like a regular fire apparatus to be able to turn around in there. And it needs, and then an ambulance needs to have access out on the track in case we have a, an injury that requires that. And then we need some ADA parking. Otherwise, we would prefer that the community walk onto the site and, and this become more of a neighborhood exercise place. You'll see that happening throughout our schools, we have a lot of neighborhood use of our school sites, by people will just walk through one of these pedestrian entrance points or might come through the main entrance on Williams and then walk up to the track. We see a lot of people doing that these days, as well as just, you know, tossing the frisbee or practicing football. We've got an extra playfield here that we don't have now, which you could do some, you know, some soccer drills and things like that on. So the idea of being there is to move people just to use that part of the facility, and then it also cuts down on the intrusion of a lot of cars and so forth to those neighbors who happen to live on those property lines, because, you know, they're sensitive about that, and they're excited that they're not going to have a parking lot next to them. Those people live between Ethel and Hood on Leonard and live on the property line, they're pretty excited about getting rid of that traffic from, from their standpoint. And we have less residences on between Hood and Williams, there's an apartment complex, and, and there's also, so we own one of the empty lots there as well. So that's some of the things that we looked at when we designed that parking up there. We want the community, if they need to park, we can open up the main parking lot, they can go park in there, and then it's just a short walk up to the field. So that would be where we would kind of point them to.
Okay, so if there's not an event, is the parking lot open to the public for people that want to run in the field? Or do they have to park in the neighborhood?
Actually, while we're talking about that, we would definitely close the, the bus drop-off because that's got some specific features to it, as well as could be an attractive place to do some things you wouldn't want to be done on a straight way.
It dripped out.
But our main, main parking lot are, we could easily open that up. It's not going, initially, we're still discussing about how mu, it would be open, obviously, for pedestrian traffic, there's no doubt about that, and for people to get onsite. But as far as parking, if there wasn't a special event, we probably wouldn't open it, to be honest with you.
Okay. All right, and then the other question, nothing to do with parking.
Yeah.
I asked earlier about capacity. I noted they added modular classrooms over the years to increase the, you know, the capacity of the classrooms.
Yeah.
But what was Gardner originally designed to, to hold?
Around 600 students.
600, so the cafeteria.
And that was only grades seven and eight.
Yeah, so the cafeteria, the library, those were.
Yeah, those are very, very much standard to the current enrollment and capacity. They're, it's one of the reasons why, in our matrix of deciding, that's one of the reasons middle school's also got some attention. If you remember, I think four or five years ago, we, we closed a few schools, one of those turned into the public safety building, and we moved sixth graders up to the middle school level because instructionally, that's what was happening with a lot of curriculum and experiences. Sixth graders were a little disengaged from an elementary school because of their maturity and size and so forth, and so we moved them up, and that's when we added those modular, the big modular building at Gardner, there's actually a building with eight classrooms, it's not big enough for all those students, but that's when we did that and expanded the capacity for instructional spaces, but we did not add any capacity for the cafeteria, the library or the gyms, and that's where we really are finding a crunch as well.
Right, so what is the current enrollment?
It's, it's right around 840.
Oh, jeez.
Yeah, so 823 when we applied, it's grown a little bit this year because of just people moving into the community. We could, our max own capacity is higher than that, but what we call our recommended or preferred capacity is right around 850.
When do you expect that the capacity at Gardner is going to hit 1,000?
Yeah, good question. We annually, just like the city, we use the same demographer as the city who does an annual evaluation of our current enrollment, and then forecasting enrollment trends based upon what's happening in the city and, and what's happening with development. The birth rate runs a, is a big driver of our enrollment, and so then he projects out and updates our projections every year. So currently, we're at about year eight to 10, when we would get close to 1,000 students.
Okay.
Based upon today's assumptions, and you know, there is some probability that they'll happen, and there's a little bit of probability they won't. It could happen faster, it could happen slower, but we watch, since we do it every, every year, we get updated, we can see when the trends change and be a little bit more responsive. Our long-term goal is, is to have a third middle school in Oregon City. We're big enough, eventually we'll be built out enough to where we'll need it. But currently, between Ogden and Gardner, we, we shouldn't hit total capacity between the two schools for at least seven to eight years or so, at least minimum.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Chris, can you add anything at this point?
No.
Okay, well, I've got a couple of real general things, and then what I'd like to do is hear from the other folks on our chart over there, and then we'll get you back up for rebuttal time, and I do have a couple of things I want to get into with more depth, but I think I'd rather hear all the public comments first before we do that. But I do have a couple of things while this slide is up. Just looking at it, I get what you're trying to do in that parking lot up with Ethel with, you got to have ambulance and, but couldn't you flip that ambulance curve the other way, eliminate that back end and have that same piece of asphalt be a turnaround and access to the track? Yeah, we're not, I wouldn't say that we're, we're completely committed to that. I mean, we would look at, if we could get the same functionality, I'm, I know that, we do have, if I can just interrupt really quick, there is a little bit, if you look right there in Ethel Street, one of the challenges of that entrance is the fact that our property line is not straight there, it kind of jogs in a little bit, and the property owner has a detached garage there that we're trying to honor their historical use of, which kind of affects how wide you can, how far down to the south you can go with that entrance. I don't know if that affected it or not.
Well, and I can also add that fire turnarounds are extremely large. They're larger than you want them to be, so are the radii to make that fire truck turn. If we were to flip that so that the turnaround were to the north, I don't think we would get the full 60 feet of depth before we hit the property line to the north of us.
Okay.
Yeah, but I understand the, the idea of being at least efficient with your turnaround, but I don't think we could turn it and reconfigure it and still meet all of the tolerances required by fire code.
Okay, and in the package we were given, it also said there might be able to be some changes to that fire turnaround at the south end of the site? Doesn't have to be as large, or is that not, is this what it needs to be now? That, I understand, is the preferred location of any fire apparatus that needs to get to the top story of the building. So because it's a more of a ladder truck, it needs a wider, and it needs a wider drive lane, and it needs a bigger radius of turning to get, to get down there in that bulb area there on the south. That's, that's for a large apparatus with a ladder and so forth.
You brought up a good point though, Mike. If there's no buildings up there, why do you need a fire turnaround up there near the top?
In case there was a, some issue that, you know, a fire, a fire, a regular fire engine responds to a medical call and they get onsite first, they're going to come in that entrance.
That's right. Every time an ambulance is called, a fire truck also shows up, so, you know, you've got to come, able.
Can you show us with your pointer on that, on the entrance plaza, what, what part of it's covered? That's a good question. I think you, there's some, there's the, David, you want to, you?
I'll have the architect come up.
And part of the reason I'm asking is there was something in some information we were given recently where that is now going to be expanded, or there was, or is it? You were asking for another 500 feet of cover, I think?
Well, there's a condition of approval for additional mitigation for the increased setback and the fact that there's a parking lot in front of the building, and the condition gives the applicant several options to add features, and one of the options is to expand the covered area of the plaza.
So maybe I could address that just a little bit more. The canopy here is pretty extensive.
The canopy here is pretty extensive. It's about 3,200 square feet, a portion of which serves as our covered bike parking. But that's a fairly deep canopy there at the upper level. There's an additional lower-level canopy here right over the entry. That's something we're doing there to provide sheltered, protected waiting area for kids that are waiting for a ride home. There's seating areas here, benches, and then different other elements there. There's, as I said, the covered bike parking there, and then on the east elevation here, that covered outdoor dining extends all the way out here. So we really think that there are pretty extensive areas that students and the community can get outside undercover.
Okay, thanks. I couldn't see that on the small map I was looking.
Yeah, okay. I would point out, since we just mentioned community use of the facilities and so forth, we actually have a community room in the building, right inside the main entrance. As soon as you get checked in, it's right, that room there is a community room that can be used by community groups. We intend to make it available to the Neighborhood Association and other community groups that would like to use that after school hours. And we're able to partition the school building, again, in those zones that I talked about where that's a complete separate zone, so community groups can use that in the evenings when there aren't any sun site.
Great. Okay. Any further questions for the applicants at this point? We'll probably have you back up.
Sure.
Anything now?
Uh, no.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right. Any representatives of other governmental agencies wishing to speak? Okay. Representative of any neighborhood associations? All right, so we're down to citizen comments.
Mike, there was a written comment as well that was emailed to you all, but can you ask about that to make sure? If not, I could make copies if everyone...
When was that sent out?
Yeah, I didn't see it.
This morning.
I didn't see it.
Oh. No, we'll need to see that. We haven't seen that.
I will be back with copies.
Okay. We have four comment cards here. We'll have you come up to at a time. First is Christina Skellinger Langford and Joe Wheeler.
My name is Christina Skellinger Langford, and I live in Oregon City. I was actually a student of Oregon City School District. Graduated in 1999 from the old high school. I didn't get the new one. I went to John McLaughlin Elementary, and I actually went to Gardner Middle School, which needed to be, I think, replaced when I went there 25 years ago. And my mom actually attended Gardner Middle School, that state middle school, which she would kill me if she knew that I put that in the public record. But anyway, it's an old school as we know. So I am, I was gone for 20 years after I graduated and about, you know, a year ago, moved back. I have a five-year-old who just started at John McLaughlin and a three-year-old who will soon be heading into the system. Moved back in part to be closer to family, but also just to go through the Oregon City School District system. I think that Oregon City, and this has echoed quite a bit through John McLaughlin, the different parents that I talked to, is up and coming. The city and community has done a lot, I think, in the last 20 years. And I think that Gardner Middle School and, you know, this new beautiful building builds on that type of growth that we've had and the type of progress that's been made within the city. So I'm very excited about the school for a couple of reasons. One, you know, I think that the opportunity for the different type of curriculum is exciting. My husband is actually a middle school teacher, and if he was here, he would echo that, you know, this type of curriculum is, its structure and the proposed design is something that's happening all across the nation, so it's exciting. It's also happening here. I think that the, not only is this a great, you know, it will not only benefit the students, but obviously the community. You know, the community aspects, having the beautiful exterior sports spaces, the community center, community meeting space, the gym, it's all going to, you know, positively impact the entire community. You know, I've been to a lot of sports events here locally for kids' practices and games. There's not a lot that goes on at Gardner. And, you know, in the future, I'm excited to see that there probably will be with all the new services there. I would also say that, you know, safety and security is really important, as well as, you know, how the ease of dropping off and picking up a kid. So I'm excited to see that there was a lot of thought put into that, so I appreciate that. And then just in general, I think that, you know, having a brand-new school like this, it is a flagship building, and it will, like the high school, I think, did after I left. But, you know, it builds on all the work and the progress that we've made in the last 20 years, and I'm just excited that, you know, my kids will be part of it. So I just want to support the recommendation of planning staff for the new Gardner Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi. My name is Joe Wheeler. I live in Oregon City also. I am appearing before you as a representative for First Presbyterian Church. We've been in discussions with the school district since August, when they came and talked to us about their proposal for how they were going to build the new school and how we could help them to mitigate some of the neighborhood effects of the construction phase in terms of how we might help them relocate construction traffic from the neighborhood streets of Williams. We're currently working with them to establish a temporary construction access across our back lot to keep that heavy traffic out of the residential area. And we have found the school district to be very accommodating in our concerns and more than willing to work with us in terms of meeting our concerns and our requirements for the use of that lot. And so I would also echo that, from our perspective, we have found the school district very easy and overthinking in the way that they've approached this project. When they briefed us on the plans for the building, we saw that it looked like a tremendous opportunity for the city and that becomes a new facility that is really up-to-date and meets a lot of concerns that I can see that the old building is starting to fall down on. So again, also, I would echo that I would ask you to support the staff recommendation and that as a neighboring property owner, we are also working with the city and the school district for the right-of-way extension of Williams Street. And, you know, we may not be thrilled about it, but we're willing to go along with it.
Great. Anything else?
No.
Thank you very much. Your support, I'm sure, is appreciated. David Johnson, oh no, that was part of the applicant's presentation, pardon me. Wes Rogers is part of the applicant. One more comment then. William Gifford.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Planning Commissioners. My name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. Wasn't going to say anything, but I just couldn't help myself. I, just to give you some background for those that don't know, that I served on the bond committee when it was being formed and doing the outreach and planning the bonding. And I also currently serve on the bond oversight committee for, it just seems like for years. But I just wanted to tell you how impressed I am with the work that the school district has done in community outreach. I think the results of that bond measure resoundingly spoke to the community's support for this activity, for the development of these two, these two middle school facilities. I think that the work that the district has done in planning these, the oversight committee has had many presentations of these designs and so on. Regarding the trees, I think they have, they have gone over and beyond what was required of them. I think that they are good neighbors, and our, our main purpose in that bond, the number one priority, was the security and safety of our students. And I think that all of the design has trickled down from that. Yes, we want it accessible. Yes, we want it attractive. Yes, we want all these other things, but the number one thing was the safety of our students, and I think that that has been very, very adequately been responded to. And I just want to, just want to support this application and sort of give it my blessing. So, there you have it.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? All right. There really isn't anything to rebut, but I do have a few questions. If you wouldn't mind coming back up.
And Mike, the email comment is...
Okay, great. All right, we're getting a copy of that. Couple of questions. At first, I was concerned about parking, but I intentionally made two visits during the day during the week and found available parking spaces onsite. So I'm not going to get too wound up about the fact that we're not getting an increase in parking spaces because I realize the student capacity is going to go up, but it's not like there's a huge issue now, so there were spaces available both times. Can we bring up the one that shows the sidewalk improvements on the three streets? Okay. I understand the flashing beacon at Williams, that's great. What will the crossings look like at Hood and Ethel? Because I suspect it's going to be difficult to get a middle school student who lives north of the site to walk basically past a couple of other access points and go to Williams to get to that flashing light. So what is the intersection going to look like, the crosswalk going to look like at Hood and Ethel? Anything above just an ordinary striped crosswalk?
Is it crossing Lyn?
Crossing Lyn, Leonard? No, crossing Lyn.
I would have to defer the public works. We have talked generally that we would be doing enhanced crosswalks throughout the neighborhood area. I don't know if we were going, the city's plan is to do enhanced crosswalks at Hood and Ethel. Hood is a little bit more problematic, I think, because it does have that apartment complex there, but after that, it, there are hard, it's hard to connect out of that area. I think Ethel Street, you'll see more, again, will have historically more crossings there across Lyn. But I think it has an enhanced crosswalk now, I think, at Lyn, I mean, at Lyn and Ethel. But I, we haven't approached, we haven't dealt with that issue. We are doing enhanced crossings on Leonard at every one of those three sites. And then at the main thoroughfare of Williams, the grade of the pedestrian path never changes when it crosses, so it stays higher than the roadway, so it's more like a speed table. The crossing's a little elevated, so that way, we're emphasizing the pedestrian crossings rather than the roadway. So we are, we are doing enhanced crosswalks everywhere, whether they're enhanced painting of the crosswalk or it's actually an elevated table, those kinds of things. But I can't speak directly to Ethel and Hood when they cross Lyn.
We do have Josh Wheeler, our Assistant City Engineer, here who can talk about it.
Yes.
As a condition of approval, we are not requiring anything further on Lyn Avenue at Hood or Ethel. We're only requiring the enhancement of the Williams intersection with Lyn.
Okay, thank you. Kind of on that same topic, the other night, within a previous, not this application, but a different application, we heard a comment from the city's traffic consultant, Mr. Riplinger, about the not necessarily good safety numbers for pedestrian sidewalks as you come out of a roundabout. And I know that the city's TSP calls for a roundabout at Warner Milne and Lyn, and I'm just, I'm wondering, and I don't, I didn't see that that was discussed anywhere. Is that signal far enough away from the roundabout that you're not going to get that effect where people come flying out of the roundabout and think they're done and go? You get what my concern, Josh?
Correct. Yes, at this time, we've actually looked at that with the, with the police, with the roundabout, with the middle school. We've actually looked at Lyn fairly in-depth and compared it to that roundabout, and we feel that everything will work accordingly without any additional enhancements.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Mike, I'm not sure how many have read this yet that just came to us. It's from Karen Mori, but I wanted to read parts of it. "I have had a personal concern about traffic flow once the construction is complete. Currently, both parents and buses line up on Hood and back into Lyn Avenue. Both that drop off and pickup time, the southbound traffic on Lyn backs up past the church, frequently through traveling, through traveling vehicles pass the line by crossing into the upcoming, our oncoming lane for several car lengths. And this area is directly across some Lynn from where the police department is now being built, would present a hazard to vehicles entering and leaving the PD from the Lyn Avenue driveway." Seems like she feels that that was addressed at some time, but I haven't heard it. And the second part of this, "In reviewing the staff recommendations, I would not support reducing the width of the bus turnaround in the lane in front of the school to increase landscaping." And it goes on, but I'm wondering, did you have a copy of this letter of hers?
Yeah.
And I wish I could understand this a little bit better. I mean, I'm not sure what she's addressing here.
Yeah, I had the same question.
Yeah, well, the first one and the second one, about the width, what she's concerned about, about the bus turnaround, I think.
I can answer that.
Yeah.
So our code requires that parking lot drive aisles, I think this came up with the last item, actually, drive aisles and parking lots are 24 feet in width. So that applies to the circulation here with the drop off.
Can we bring up that better, the better map?
Yeah.
Is she concerned because of the top part? Is she concerned about parents and buses coming in at the same location? Is that what...
Well, I think that's what the existing condition, right, at Gardner? But now, everything will be separated. So this aisle right here is proposed at 30 feet wide, and then the bus drop off is, I want to say about 38 feet. Now, clearly, the bus drop off, it's going to be two-way. Buses are large vehicles. You have to have room for some to pull over, so we know that that's going to exceed 24 feet, and we've acknowledged that. The condition of approval just says unless that the width is required as part of fire code by the Clackamas Fire District, that the aisle should be reduced to the minimum width necessary. And so for the buses, we don't know exactly what that would be, but we're going to rely on the fire district to tell us and then the applicant to, you know, show us how much room the buses need to circulate. And then for the parent drop off, it's one-way. And so the requirement would really be 24 feet rather than 30 feet. But we do say that if the fire district comes back with information showing that they need more than 24 feet, then we will allow that. But if they don't need more than 24 feet, then that needs to be reduced.
So when, knowing how wide buses are, anybody who's tried to get around them in the parking lot of schools, why not have the higher standard? I mean, is it, or this is another case of minimum versus maximum kind of a situation? Why not allow for more space for moving?
Yeah, so it just needs to be, they just need to demonstrate how much is actually needed to move. We don't have a standard specifically for bus loops, because that's kind of a rare circumstance. Our code doesn't address that.
So who demonstrates that?
The applicant.
The applicant. So we could say yes to this, and we still don't know for sure what that's going to be?
So if you say, if you say yes to what's recommended, then the school district will have to show, demonstrate through, you know, fire district information and kind of diagrams showing us bus circulation, that they require a certain width. And then if they can't do that, then they'd need to reduce the width accordingly.
That's regarding the parking, but what about our first comments about backing up on Hood and Lyn and so close to the police department?
If you read the next paragraph, she says, "In the plan presented in November, this has been addressed in an improved transportation plan." And I believe that's when you separated the bus traffic from the parent traffic.
Correct. And we also lengthened the extension of Williams Street even further, because in that original plan you might have seen earlier, it stopped a ways earlier than, so we actually increased some of the queuing that can happen on Williams Street as well. so we actually increased some of the queuing that can happen on Williams Street as well.
While we're talking about Williams Street, so there's a south, going from the south, there's the 10-foot shared use path, and then a buffer strip, and then two traffic lanes, and then, and that's what the, that's what you're building?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you're not building a sidewalk on the other side of the street?
Uh, yeah, I think we are. Yeah, we're building a sidewalk on the other side.
Oh, you are? Yeah, the regular sidewalk.
The new section of Williams will include sidewalks on both sides, so it'll have the shared use path and then sidewalk here. But from Leonard to Lynn on Williams, there won't be a sidewalk on the north side. The, the school district won't be required to build a sidewalk on the north side.
Back here, no sidewalk on the north side.
So the existing section of Williams will only get the sidewalk on the south side, and it'll be 10 feet instead of 5 feet.
On the south side?
Yes.
Yeah. And is there a cost in real estate to the residences on, on the north side of the street?
So the right-of-way exists, um, so it, it, there would not be any right-of-way dedication, um, from those neighbors, but, um, I do, I can show you the pictures, I think, here. Uh, so Williams is right here, um, so the right-of-way line is probably more where the fence is, probably, uh, so there's lawn, trees, driveways, um, in that area now, um, and so that would kind of just remain as it is and be a little bit undefined.
Anybody have, any other comments on, um, specifically related to the streets or sidewalks?
If we're going to that extent for the school and doing the sidewalk, why aren't we improving both sides? 'Cause kids never follow exactly the same path.
The school district is required to build all of this, so if we, if it, if a sidewalk goes in on the north side, you'd be requiring more of the school district.
Well, they got lots of money.
More expense. Um, also, the crosswalk across Lynn will be on that south side, so anyone crossing over is gonna be using that crosswalk, and they'll already be on the south side of Lynn. Also, we found that more of the, uh, student traffic and traffic in general comes from the south. Um, so, so people are coming through that future roundabout intersection at Lynnley, Lynn Myers, Warner Milne, um, and so they would be, uh, coming from the south, and so they would just stay on the south side of Williams.
Yeah, I think I'd point out, too, one of the important safety features, you could walk on the south side of Williams all the way down to the end of the extension and then go into the property and not have to cross a traffic lane.
Right.
And that was a, um, a city staff recommendation, which we really appreciate, because we, we're trying to figure out how we were going to do that, and then we just realized we might as well just build, for the safety reasons, build it and just have them come down around the end of the street, which made a lot of sense then, when we extended it, and it winds up really good with a straight, um, pedestrian path then down to the entry plaza.
Okay. Okay, I guess I do have a question. Uh, when kids are walking south on Lynn, on the west side of Lynn, and they're approaching the crosswalk, where that flashing beacon's gonna be, they're gonna be crossing at, uh, they're gonna be crossing Lynn at Williams on the south side, and then the sidewalk is gonna be on the south side of Williams, so they don't need to cross Williams on the east side of Williams. And that's where you didn't wanna put the left-turn lane, because it got too wide, and when a pedestrian has to cross three lanes of traffic, it becomes more problematic. But if the kids are crossing on the south side of Williams, who's crossing there on the east side? Who's coming from that direction? Is there even a lot of pedestrian traffic? Yeah, is there a lot of pedestrian traffic happening there, since the, the crosswalk's gonna actually be here and the sidewalk's gonna be here? It's all gonna happen on this side.
Mm-hmm.
Who's crossing there?
I would imagine it's probably going to be the people who live on that side of the street.
Maybe...
Four or five homes.
Yeah, these guys, because these guys are gonna probably just cross over on Hood.
Right, and there'll be, there'll be sidewalk on that side of the street, yeah.
But a left-turn lane would really facilitate getting out of, getting out of there. Otherwise, one person tries to take a left, he can't, and everybody's backed up behind them.
Yeah, um, I would leave that to the traffic engineers. Uh, I've dabbled in that before, and it's not turned out very well.
I've been on those left-hand turns, I agree.
So one of the things that's gonna happen is people are gonna get backed up, and you can't take a left, and they're gonna start going through the neighborhood.
Um, oh, yeah, there's some, if you look at the traffic report, they talk about the percentages of traffic that are going to look for alternative ways to get off of Williams, because it is, everybody's gonna turn, come out of the parking lot and go down Williams. But I think you'll see a fair amount of traffic head down Leonard over to, uh, Holmes.
Yeah.
And then, and try to go that way back out, or go over to Ethel, and then, and then that road out, um, down, uh, Telford, is it? I think it is eventually. So, um, but yeah, you're right, some of these, there's, because we don't have sidewalks on both sides of the street, or on both sides of Johnson, it does make it challenging. Uh, you'll still see some students just walking, um, and, you know...
Yeah, and I understand there's budget concerns, but if there was a sidewalk here, then you wouldn't even, ever need to cross there, really.
Right.
Yeah, you could cross there and, you know...
Yeah, and we looked at, at that whole Williams Street, um, profile of wanting to have a really enhanced pedestrian pathway on the south side, so that kids could bike, could skateboard, and we do have kids who do skateboard and ride scooters and, you know, per scooters to school. Wanna make sure we provide a safe way for them to be on the same path with walkers. And then when you look at the Williams Street, as you can see even there, we're trying to be really sensitive to those people who live on the north side of Williams Street and try not to, uh, take out landscaping, as well as some fences and things like that, um, 'cause they, those homes are pretty close to the right-of-way.
They're really close.
So, it's that balancing act there.
Yeah, it's a balancing act, but it's children's safety.
Yeah, oh, we'll watch it, and for sure, I, I know that we're, the city and, and the school district are on the same page. If we see a situation after we, um, start seeing maybe some other traffic patterns in the meantime before we open the school, or after we open the school, the district will definitely be at the table wanting to come back to whatever we need to do at the city to get some more, um, enhancements done for kids' safety, for sure.
Okay. All right. That was it. Can you bring up the site plan again? I hate to bring this up.
This is why we're here.
I, first off, I'm gonna say, I think you've done a terrific job, and move, flipping the school in the field makes perfect sense. I'm concerned about that field, because if it's going to be artificial turf, and if it's going to be lit, it's gonna get a lot more use and noise for those surrounding neighbors than the school building did. So I guess I kinda have a, a two-part question. Did any of those immediate neighbors express a concern about that? And, and what are the plans for that field? Is it gonna be artificial turf? Is it gonna be lit? Because honestly, I don't see, I, I never lit a football field. I did light a few parking lots in my work years, and, and I don't know how you could get sufficient light on that field that close to the property line and not have more than half a foot candle in the backyards of the neighbors on the other side of the fence. Maybe you can, I, like I said, I've never done a football field. But I'm, I'm just concerned about the impact on the immediate neighbors if that becomes a lit, artificial turf field with lots of use.
That's why I asked about the trees lining that backside.
Yeah, um, yeah, that'll... Couple of, uh, a couple of statements. Um, we intend to put facilities in the ground to support future lights, if the district so chooses along. I'm sure that they'll be sensitive to the community and to neighbors, but we won't put lights in initially, but we will have conduit and facilities in the ground to support those if down the road the district decides to put in lights. As far as synthetic turf, we're kinda studying that right now. Um, I, it is definitely a budget increase for this project to do synthetic turf, but it does drastically increase the amount of time you can spend on these fields, 'cause we would be doing synthetic turf on not only the football track, but also that, um, small soccer field down the, in the middle part on the left. That really increases kids being able to get out. On marginal days, maybe it rained during the night and so forth, but they can still get outside and do PE. As well as increasing the amount of time that the community can use the field, I, we actually shut our fields down, and we have an excess of community use. In fact, we get a fair amount of complaints that people have to drive to West Lynn, Wilsonville, other places, North Clackamas, um, out off of Sunnyside, to artificial turf fields to have their, their, their children involved in community recreation activities. So I think there is, there is a community, um, pent-up demand, I think, for synthetic surface field. Whether the district can, can allocate the budget dollars to make that happen, uh, I can't speak to that right now, we haven't come to that point. Soon, though, we have to make our decision. Um, as far as the impact on neighbors, and we've been very direct with, we had neighbors in the July, the summer meeting, when we had Neighbor Association, we had a couple neighbors come and talk about that issue, how much noise is there gonna be and so forth, and we said, "Well, it is about 50 feet off the property line to the side of the track, and so there's a little bit of distance there. Now that we're not removing the trees, there's a little bit of an acoustic buffer and visual buffer because of that." But we did say, yeah, it's probably going to be a little noisier on the weekends, because people are going to, I mean, we'll make it available to the community, we're not going to just not, not make it available. It's been part of a, just district emphasis, is using our facilities for community use. So, yeah, there'll be more noise, for sure, during, especially the nicer parts of the season, when a lot of people are out on the fields. But they don't have to worry about lighting, because at this point, um, I'm not sure that we would be able to, like you stated, accomplish our lighting goals. There's a condition of approval around that as well. Uh, we haven't even studied it to see if we could even meet that requirement, but we're agreeable to the condition of approval, setting that standard, and if we can't meet the standard, we would be able to put the lights in. So, um...
Those were good questions, because I was thinking, that's why I originally asked about the trees, a buffer from that.
Yeah, having the trees there is, is a big improvement.
Is the field a sunken field? I mean, is it down in like a bowl, almost a bowl?
No.
Kind of, it's at the same level, so, and I know it's not a high school, so they're not gonna be playing Friday night games.
Well, it, it, you might have some, this would be games or...
Daytime games, for sure.
Youth football. And there's a, quite a strong youth football association. They would wanna use this field, for sure. There'd be a lot of use.
So I would assume...
It's artificial turf.
Assume that the bond fund doesn't cover nice, extreme things like, uh, the, the field having artificial turf and, uh, the parents...
Well, I would have to answer that by saying what's extreme to one person is not extreme.
Those parents want it for their kids, and they should have to pay for it in that area.
They'll, they'll definitely pay, they'll definitely pay more to use this field than they would one of our existing natural grass fields, for sure.
Yeah, just parents want everything, but they want us all to pay for it.
Yeah, well, we do take all the rental fees from our, our synthetic turf fields, and we put them in a special fund that helps fund the replacement of that field then in about 10 to 12 years, so...
Commissioner Johnson?
Uh, a quick follow-on to Chair Mitchell's comments about facilities around the stadium, or the football field, soccer field, whatever. Any, uh, capacity for seating? Is there any of that planned on sides or end zone?
Not initially. Um, we don't, um, currently, the district has a, oh, probably seating for maybe 50 or 60 people at Gardner, and half of that is in such disrepair that you wouldn't use it. And we don't get a high demand for that. Um, most of our community use is the classic, bring your lawn chair and an umbrella, and stand around the field. That's, um, if, if somebody were to rent the field for a special event, we would be working with the city about this, the, any permitting they would need to do to bring in any temporary bleachers or those kinds of things. Um, but we regulate that pretty heavily, because the more things you bring in, the more things get damaged and, and, and that. But normally, it's gonna be people standing on the track, probably with umbrellas, and putting down lawn chairs and stuff and watching events.
Okay, one last thing, I'm sorry. Uh, up there, those lines, are those topography lines, and what's the increment on those? On the right side of the field, or is that like, is that a raised hump on the right there? What am I looking at?
Okay, was there a one-foot contour there? Okay, it's a drop in elevation.
That's a drop?
Yeah.
Like a hole?
Yeah, there is. If you've been to Gardner before, when you go out that, that backside of the existing building, it drops down. Used to be some tennis courts back there, if you've been in the community long enough.
Okay, so they had to build it up a little bit to get it flat?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the hump on the right side, uh, beyond the bus turnaround? Is that a hole?
The stormwater facility.
That's right.
Okay.
Right here. Yeah, that's it. I just saw one more thing in my notes. The area of chain-link fence, which is not visible, I, I saw that requirement, is that required to be black?
I believe it's proposed that way, um, but there's no condition of approval, uh, that...
So currently, does it?
Yeah, I think it did.
Currently, we're not planning to uni, use any of the traditional galvanized on-site.
Oh, okay.
Um, we were gonna do red. No, just kidding. Sorry. I had to do one, one comic remark. Yeah, I'm wearing red tonight, so I gotta support the Oregon City High School red color, so, um, typically, almost all of our chain-link fencing that we do now is, um, the black, the one on the upper right there.
So this is the, what they've turned in.
The turn, okay, so it would be black.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else from any of the commissioners? Anything else from the applicants? Okay, at this point, unless anybody has an objection, we'll close the public hearing. All right, the public hearing is closed. Comments or discussion from the commissioners?
I'm excited about the project. It's very impressed.
Yeah. I, I was very pleased to hear, uh, positive comments from the church and positive comments from other neighbors, I, I think.
That was a bonus for the church.
Absolutely, and that's a good thing about us working on this. We know that the community supports this, 'cause they voted with their pocketbooks to build it, so...
Right.
Well, no, not everybody, but a majority, but a majority did.
A lot of seniors who don't wanna spend any more money on it.
Okay, I shouldn't have started that, now we're on, get Tom back up on his soapbox.
That's right.
Okay, any other comments from the commissioners?
No.
Anyone have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we, uh...
I lost it.
Recommend approval for, somebody give, fill in the numbers.
It's, um, we're not recommending approval, we're approving, approving.
Yeah.
Where is that?
GLUA 1925.
Does this go to the city commission after us?
No.
Recommend approval with the conditions laid out.
With the, with conditions as listed in the statement.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve with conditions listed in the staff report. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, moving second it. Any other comment? Call or roll?
Okay, Commissioner Schlag, Schlagenhoffer?
Aye.
Commissioner Giles?
Go ahead, I'm still thinking.
Commissioner Gage?
Just a little principal.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Giles?
Reluctantly, aye.
And Chair Mitchell?
Aye. All right, motion carries. Okay, I seem to have misplaced my agenda, there's my agenda. All right, communications, Mr. Turway?
Should be a quick one, 'cause I do not have any, uh, other than, um, "Thank you for a great 2018, uh, we will..."
2019?
2019, I don't even know what year it is. Uh, 2019, um, you get the holidays off, and we'll see you back here on January 13th.
And we will know the name of the individual that the mayor is appointing at that time, right?
That's right. We still don't know what the name of the mayor, or the individual that the mayor is appointing to the planning commission, but I will send you an email to let you know, um, and then we'll have a swearing-in ceremony in January for the new commissioner as well.
Okay. Do we all take that oath over again, or is ours open, are we covered since we've already done it? Just curious.
If you get reappointed, you would take it again.
Oh, okay.
But only, uh, when you're reappointed.
Okay. Uh, the only other thing I have is, uh, two nights from now, I am doing our annual update to the city commission, and I'm sure we'll be just, can't miss TV.
Yes, no comment.
Unless, unless anybody has anything else? All right, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.